What are you doing here? Asset management?
Yeah.
Oh.
Excited. Yes, we're switching to a different button. I think so. It's gonna be a little bit more upfront to get it running. We're excited for what it'll be. Yes. We still haven't. We still haven't. You know, you're making it seem like an honest man. His personality.
That's all he is.
Yeah, I think interact with him twice a year. Does he help you with that? Okay. Right, right. Okay. Yeah, I feel like it actually works. Good luck, Max.
The October ninth, 2025, Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Mahoney will be leading us in the pledge tonight. Please stand up here, April.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Thanks for being here, those of you that came out in person, and also those of you who are watching us online. We appreciate having you here tonight. Please know that if you're watching online, like on YouTube or live, our channel 21, we can't attend to our phones from the dais, so if you have any technical problems, feel free to email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So now it's time for comments from the public. A special note, we now are live on Zoom, so we do have a feature where people can join us and offer public comment by Zoom, but you do need to register a couple of days in advance and get ahold of the city clerk, but I just wanted to mention that. It's a nice feature. If you come to the podium tonight, please be respectful and keep your comments respectful. And a special note, it is campaign season, so we won't be able to receive any comments tonight if it could be perceived as promoting a candidate who's running for office. When you do come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your city of residence. And I only have one person signed up and actually Rhoda, as a member, come on up. Rhoda Green is first. And as a member of Friends of Saltwater State Park, you have five minutes if you'd like to use that.
All right.
So, welcome. Thanks for coming here tonight.
Hello. Thank you very much. I'm trying to see how this works, so give me a hot second here. All right. My name is Rhoda Green. I'm with the Friends of Saltwater State Park. Mayor Backson, City Manager Cafrey, board members. The Friends of Saltwater State Park was established in 2016. We are an all-volunteer nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that works in partnership with Washington State Parks to promote the health of the park and enjoyment of its visitors. Okay. Washington is one of the older state parks. We are people who love the park and volunteer to care for the environment, its visitors, and the community. Its forest adds oxygen, the air that we breathe. The park mainly consists of second-generation forest that has trails along the waterfront, along the, in the forest, and along McSorley Creek. At the mouth of the creek is a huge alluvial fan that's excellent for exploring the beach. And offshore is an amazing underwater park teeming with wildlife, exciting for divers to enjoy. On the bluff, we have monthly work parties. November 1st, we'll be focusing on planting. It's a great opportunity that includes, everybody's included, including friends, families, groups are most welcome. Also, we have, along the stream, is planting along McSorley Creek. It's a great opportunity for people to plant, so that way they get to see the plants that grow there also and see them transform the environment and visit them and care for them also. The rain is here, and it's coming. The salmon are coming along with it. This is a, these incredible fish make their way upstream to complete their life cycle. We will be serving now until later December. Along the way, we've been seeing some juvenile salmon. In the creek, they spend about a year munching on bugs and then head out to sea. If we're lucky, we might even have one later on, on our dinner plate. This past year, excuse me, this past year of three years, we've only had modest returns, like about, in the teens. Four years, there was like about 40. Every salmon we see is a small victory to the creek and a challenge for, is amazing. Viewing is often seen along the bridge. As part of our fall campaign with the city of Des Moines, we are marking storm drains, the storm drains that go in, especially those along Saltwater State Park and Des Moines If you're a part of the Adopt a Drain program, contact us. We'd be happy to come out to your area and put on a decal on your drain. We do water monitoring at the mouth of the creek, McSorley Creek, and off, and also offshore. For more information, check out our website. Saltwater State Park has an amazing underwater park teeming with wildlife. We provide exploration, education, training, and opportunities for divers and the public. We give classes conducting various forms of citizen science surveys focusing on different aspects of the underwater world. Together, we give more, it gives a more complete understanding of the underwater world. It's a fun way for divers to learn and give back. Every day is a great day to be at the beach. This year, we hosted 22 Beach Exploration Days. We will likely have a few exciting exploration days coming up soon for evening beach walks. We provide nature exploration, education, opportunities for all, schools, clubs, camps, scouts. Contact us. Together, we love our park. Please visit our website, get involved, sign up for activities, events, find a way to volunteer that matches your skill set to help maintain different ways of the park and donate in ways that works good for you, your talents, contributions, or materials, or offer other forms of support. We always open, or we are always open to ideas, so please reach out to us to let us find a way to help the park together. This is your backyard. Let's enjoy it, share it, and protect it for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What amazing work. Thank you. We really appreciate it. I just wanted to give the council an opportunity, if they have any comments or questions for you. Councilmember Mahoney.
I am a diver, and it's one of my favorites. There's, there's lingcod down there that are 35, 40 pounds. They're amazing creatures to see, along with the giant Pacific octopus. And the group of divers, I know some of them, I've just really appreciated their efforts to, you know, monitor and maintain that site. It shows that these types of reefs there really can work well. A great example, if we could get them into other places, but it, because of the nature preserve, it's really, every year, I just see it getting better and better and better. So I, I do hike the trails and do spend time at the park, too, but particularly, it's wonderful under there that a lot of people don't get to see. It's a heck of a swim, though.
We have boat moorings there, so boats.
No, no, I know you do, but, yeah, I take the hard way, and a lot of times, I regret it, you know. No, it's, it's, it's great to get out there. And I know Russ over there from the Mass Center, he's probably been there a few, quite a few times. We both enjoy the great diving here, and that, that site's fantastic.
Yeah. But thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilmember Harris.
I just wanted to say thank you, especially Bob. People have, like, no, I, I mean, the, the science he does in terms of water quality monitoring, Ed, the work that you've done with the tire reef, unbelievable, Nadine, I'm just, it's just unbelievable, and I wish I just, yeah, it's just unbelievable, and thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you very much. I'll be sure to relay that information to Bob. Thank you. All right. Wow, thank you, Rhoda. Appreciate you. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Absolutely. All right. I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anybody who came tonight expecting to speak from the podium but didn't realize that you needed to sign up in order to do so? You're free to step forward right now. Okay. Well, earlier, I did skip roll call, so please make, let the record show that all council members are present. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Councilmember Nutting are attended remotely. We can see them both on the screen. Everyone else is here, so thank you for that. Moving on to regional committee reports. Currently, the council is operating in a committee of the whole model, so we don't have separate, many separate committees with chairs for reporting out on those committees, but we do, several council members do serve regionally and bring the interests of our city, the city of Des Moines, to regional tables, so this is a time for them to share about that. Is there anybody that has something they would like to share from their service out in the community? Councilmember Mahoney and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz after that. Thank you.
So we had the PSRC Transportation Policy Board meeting today. Basically, we went over the legislative agenda, which really didn't change much, obviously greener commutes, better roads, all the things, looking at alternatives like ferry services and so forth and supporting those. The big conversations today were on the gas tax, which continues to go more as a percentage to the state and not the local roads, which is problematic. So we spoke about the difficulties of trying to fund our projects. In addition, the state projects this year continue to have a 47% $47 million shortfall, and we talked about the shutdown and hold, held dollars in those regards and kind of things. It's getting harder to do stuff locally. You need the federal and state dollars, and when they take a bigger share, you gotta be more dependent on them. So it's, it's, it's difficult to do that, and we all stress that. The other thing is, is they talked about the changing the mix of the board, right? And there's an effort by the bigger cities to take more dominance in presentation of the seats, and like, like, we have two smaller city representations. I'm one of them, Peter Kwan from Sea Tax, the other. And if you're under 80,000, they want to make that from two seats to one. And we were adamantly opposed. A lot of us have, are where the arterials, where a lot of the main roads come off, and we definitely need our say. But when the money gets tighter, this is when the bigger entities want to, want to get more control so they can manage and influence those dollars. And so fortunately, the South Sound, Mayor Ralph in particular, is a champion of keeping it the way it is, and that was generally the consensus of the board at this time was to do that. The power of big cities and counties and stuff, that's an entity, is always tough. And they got ways to do things. An example would be the West Seattle Bridge. We had a lot of money allocated that was going to different places, and Seattle never virtually even showed up at the meetings. All of a sudden, they need several more million dollars to make the bridge, fix the bridge in the shortfall. Instantly, they show up. So it's one of those things where we try to protect our influence there. And I think for today, we did, but it's an ongoing battle.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, last week, I attended the, or not last week, last night, it seems like that long ago, some, sometime, also remotely, the Sound Cities Public Issues Committee. And as many of you know, I am the city's representative on that. We finalized the letter regarding the new criminal caseload standards. The letter is going to the state legislature to try to really impress upon them that what has happened is essentially, this is an unfunded mandate that is coming to the cities, and the, really, Washington State is one of only eight states that put the majority burden of local public defense on the cities themselves and does not have it. We talked about the, the rising costs, the defense recruitment challenges that will occur, the operational and fiscal impacts to it, and just the inequity of the impact because in the county system, the state funds a significant portion of their public defense. That does not happen at the city level at all. And as a consequence, we're going to require, we're going to need the state to develop ongoing, well-funded resources, workforce development, and guidance as to how to effectively allocate the resources that the state can provide. Keeping in mind, of course, this is going to be a tough budget year for everybody, but this is happening over the next 10 years, and it's going to be happening incrementally over the next 10 years. And as a consequence of that, the state needs to start dealing with it at this point before it becomes a real crisis to all of our cities. The other issue that took a lot of our time is the, the county program that funds the arts. There's a lot of funding that is available. They'd be happy to come speak to any municipality that wants to find out what's being funded in the area. They are happy to take applications from anybody that wants to do a large art project that needs help developing from just a concept to a workable 501(c)(3) and pushing forward culture for the arts. And culture for the arts can be defined pretty broadly. For example, there's a historical society that applied for and got a three-year grant to develop its programming. And so I think this is a, a great opportunity for anybody that might be interested with that, and I do want to pass that along especially to the Des Moines Historical Society because I thought that was a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Next up, we have the city manager's report, and I'll pass that over to City Manager Captain Cafrey.
Mayor and council, tonight, we have Russ Higley here from Highline College's MAST to give an update on the six-gill shark capital of the world and some of the efforts the MAST is doing regarding this.
Great. Thank you all for having me. I didn't bring one of our sharks, but if anyone wants to wear during this presentation, Matt, I don't know.
I know, I was promised a shark, but I don't see it.
I know, I tried to recruit, but I just, I was there in the spirit. So, wanted just to, to show you what happened due to the work that you all helped laid last year. So, a quick look back. In March of last year, you passed a resolution naming Des Moines as the six-gill shark capital of the world. You declared July 6th as Six-Gill Shark Day, and then you asked the city to explore educational opportunities and related funding to expand that. On 4/10, the city council authorized Surface Water Management and Tyler's team to spend up to $10,000 of their educational budgets on items related to using the six-gill shark as kind of the keynote species for the stormwater management outreach that they're doing. And also decided, the city council decided to postpone potentially at least till 2026, the idea of exploring Sixth Avenue as Six-Gill Shark Avenue. So just as a, as a quick flashback to where we were six months ago. We getting ready for Six-Gill Shark Day, and, thank you. And so, if you would, the video. So just a, this was done by the MAST to help promote this. So, we had to do some training with the sharks. We took them to the marina, they walked out on the pier, they stopped by Dick's to get some milkshakes. Again, right, getting ready for the day. I then also really want to recognize Redondo Community Association. They had 29 members do a cleanup prior to the day of Wooton Park, pressure washing. I know Gene was there, and so actually, the bottom right pitcher is, is the illustrious council member there, cleaning up. And so Wooton Park hadn't looked so good in, in a long time, you know, really got into it. Shark in the Park Day itself brought an estimated 1,000 people or more to Redondo. There wasn't a hard number, but for example, the MAST had its, its biggest day with over 500 guests, lines that never dropped below 30 minutes and frequently exceeded an hour. So in other words, half the people didn't go because the lines were so bad. Parking was our biggest challenge, we'll freely admit that. It was exacerbated by the fact that it was the first day of crabbing season, so that took up a lot of the spaces. Cars were lined up Redondo Way all the way up to 13th Avenue. So again, ton, ton of people down there. And you can see, we had a lot of these things, actually, I believe a couple of these pictures are yours, Tracy. So, you know, trying to, to show just some of the amazingness with that. We had three different craft tables, which also, again, the Redondo Community Association stepped up. They were literally run, organized, staffed. Everything was done by Redondo Community. Truly thankful for their help. And each table had a different craft. So in other words, you could potentially bounce from one table to another. We had face painting, we had chalk on the sidewalk right around the play area with local artists. We had, the upper right corner is a mermaid that took pictures with, with them, right? So we, we really tried to kind of, I, the way I described it to you all is, is Earth Day meets farmer's market vibe, is what we were going with it. We had over 25 vendors. Here's a list of most of them. The city was well-represented as well, which thank you for that. You can see a lot of these are Des Moines Businesses Eight, for example, SR3 TLC are Des Moines Businesses. We also had some artists come in, spread all across Wooton Park. The city, we also did the proclamation of Des Moines as a six-gill capital, so we did that as an announcement. We unveiled the first six-gill shark infographic sign, so you can see the sharks unveiling the sign. The bottom right pitcher is the graphic designer who actually donated her graphic design for that. And so this first sign was, although we're working with Swim, this first one was done completely by the MAST and donations that the MAST brought in. So that's, and obviously, that's good for the good of the public. And then we also, that day, had the first six-gill shark capital of the world dive event with divers jumping off the end of the pier. So a really fun day overall. We then joined the waterland parade and had the six-gill shark capital of the world shark cage and, and had sharks. We actually won first prize for best float and third prize for enthusiasm. So, I was in one of those sharks, and I swear, I thought I was going to die of heat stroke. It was, it was a little intense in those, but a lot of fun. This has made some significant media attention, two TV shows, King Five and Fox News Story, and then two articles, one in Seattle Magazine and one in Seattle Refined, talking about Des Moines as the six-gill shark capital of the world. How cool is that? So, what's next? So we're continuing our partnership with Surface Water Management and the MAST Center using the six-gill as the focal point for stormwater education. The work is ongoing. I met with Tyler Staff this week, for example. I will admit, the Take a Bite Out of Pollution is ChatGPT giving me an example that is not in any way official. Tyler has not approved that, but just to kind of show you, imagine painting storm drains. Rhoda had talked about, you know, and, and Mike Slevin has talked about, if, you know, hits the ground, it hits the sound that Tacoma does. So what's Des Moines, and we will be the only one that uses the shark. So it's, it's pretty cool there. We're also looking at expansion of the Shark in the Park event, tentatively scheduled for the 12th, which is a Sunday, of July next year. Potentially, this, the council could, can bring back the idea of renaming Sixth Avenue as Six-Gill Shark Avenue in an honorary way. Beyond Des Moines, there's underway to have Washington State recognize the six-gill shark as the state shark. There are 11 species that are actually found in the Puget Sound, and Seattle's newest team in the professional women's hockey league is reportedly considering naming their, their shark, or naming their team the six-gill sharks. So, right, so there's, there's some legs on this in terms of community outside, bigger than Des Moines, that would still bring attention to Des Moines. Thank you.
There's fins on it.
There's fins.
Not legs. I'm kidding.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah. So, any questions?
Okay, yeah, any questions? Go ahead.
Well, the, the ones you forgot to, I'll borrow that for Halloween. How about that? I'm not going to wear it on the days. Make, I make an ass out of myself all the time anyway, so why would I want to add to that? The, but Highline College and the MAST Center deserve a lot of credit, too. You obviously thanked, you know, the, the Redondo Community and the city, and yes, they did a great part in this, but Highline College and MAST Center with their partnership has really made this an event. A long time ago, when you and I started talking about this, it was something we could do as a game changer. There were some reservations, let's wait and see if it's going to go and take off. I think it's taken off and exceeded everybody's expectations. I would say that the council, the next council should definitely entertain, and it could be part of next year's July 12th event, is the revealing Six-Gill Shark Avenue. I think, I think it should, we should do it, we should do it as soon as we can, but that might be the right time to do it. I can't, I can't thank you enough personally, Russ. You really have a driver. I know you've got some great interns and other folks that work with you that got behind it as well, but I have been amazed at how many people go, oh, yeah, I saw you, you guys are the six-gill shark capital of the world. I know, like, eight, eight dive shop has got behind it. Their six-gill apparel selling 10 times over what anything else they ever had. That's how successful it is. It's coveted by the dive community all over the place. I was in Galapagos Islands, and I proudly wore my six-gill shark apparel. But I think you and your team have done a great job, and again, Highline College deserves some credit for also embracing.
giving me an example that is not in any way official. Tyler has not approved that, but just to kind of show you. Imagine painting storm drains. Rhoda had talked about, you know, and Mike Slevin has talked about, if it, you know, hits the ground, it hits the sound that Tacoma does. So, what's Des Moines, and we will be the only one that uses the shark. So, it's pretty cool there. We're also looking at expansion of the Shark in the Park event, tentatively scheduled for the 12th, which is a Sunday of July next year. Potentially, the council could bring back the idea of renaming Sixth Avenue as Six-Gill Shark Avenue in an honorary way. Beyond Des Moines, there's underway to have Washington State recognize the six-gill shark as the state shark. There are 11 species that are actually found in the Puget Sound, and Seattle's newest team in the professional women's hockey league is reportedly considering naming their shark, or naming their team the six-gill sharks. So, right, so there's some legs on this in terms of community outside bigger than Des Moines that would still bring attention to Des Moines. Thank you.
There's fins on it.
There's fins.
Not legs. I'm kidding.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah. So, any questions?
Okay, yeah, any questions? Go ahead.
Well, the ones you forgot to, I'll borrow that for Halloween. How about that? I'm not going to wear it on the days. I make an ass out of myself all the time anyway, so why would I want to add to that? The, but, Highline College and the Mast Center deserve a lot of credit, too. You obviously thanked, you know, the Redondo Community and the city, and yes, they did a great part in this, but Highline College and Mast Center with their partnership has really made this an event. A long time ago, when you and I started talking about this, it was something we could do as a game changer. There were some reservations, let's wait and see if it's going to go and take off. I think it's taken off and exceeded everybody's expectations. I would say that the council, the next council should definitely entertain, and it could be part of next year's July 12th event, is the revealing six-gill shark avenue. I think, I think it should, we should do it. We should do it as soon as we can, but that might be the right time to do it. I can't, I can't thank you enough personally, Russ. You really have a driver. I know you've got some great interns and other folks that work with you that got behind it as well. But, I have been amazed at how many people go, oh, yeah, I saw you. You guys are the six-gill shark capital of the world. I know, like, eight dive shop has got behind it. Their six-gill apparel selling 10 times over what anything else they ever had. That's how successful it is. It's coveted by the dive community all over the place. I was in Galapagos Islands, and I proudly wore my six-gill shark apparel. But, I think you and your team have done a great job, and again, Highline College deserves some credit for also embracing this as well. So, thank you so much.
Any other comments around the table here? No? Well, Russ, excellent. Great presentation, lots of work, and it's kind of sweet that you're excited to do all that work again.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you. Thank you for a great experience. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Russ. And some of you may have also seen Russ and Councilmember Mahoney on the news this past weekend, also related to marine life. Now, our finance director, who's not in a shark costume, and, I'm not to disappoint Jeff, but good luck following this. We'll be here to talk about the budget process.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff and the public. No, I don't have sharks in my presentation, but I do have a water skiing turkey, so don't underestimate me. So, this presentation's about the 2025-2026 mid-biennium review. So, biennial budgeting. Last year, the council approved our recommendation of switching from an annual budget process to a biennial budget process. So, instead of budgeting from scratch every single year, we get to, in odd numbered years, we budget for two years, and then again, so in 20, we budgeted for 2025 last year, and then in 2026, we'll be budgeting for 2027 and 2028. The year in between, when we're not doing a full budget process, the state requires that we do what is called a mid-biennium review. So, one of the questions last year was, well, what do we do during the mid-biennium? And then, there may have been a little bit of uncertainty on what's coming up. And so, the purpose of this presentation is really to share the key dates and just let everyone know what to expect from now until the end of the year in regards to the mid-biennium review. So, key dates actually starts in July. So, there's been work that's been going on, on the administration side, that's not been in council meetings. So, that has been basically the city manager and the management team reviewing the budget for adjustments. We've had department meetings on the budget with each department, and each, you know, which includes each director and any staff members that are managing a budget. And then, we are also looking at, like, economic trends and what assumptions we made originally in the budget and see where we stand now. So, moving on from September into October, and a surfing spider. See, I brought it. So, October, October 10th, and the years going by so fast, like, when is October 10th? That's tomorrow. Finance, city manager, we will review the capital improvements plan. So, tomorrow at 1:30, we're going to be reviewing that. That's an annual process, but it does get kind of folded into the budget process as well. And you'll notice also that even though this is a biennial process this year, it's very similar, almost the same process that we would do anyway. The main difference is, we don't have to start from scratch this year. So, that saves us a lot of time and enables us to do other things this year that we probably wouldn't be able to do if we're doing a full budget process. So, on October 17th, the city manager and finance will get together and review the budget adjustments for 2025 and 2026. So, that's at the end of next week. On the 21st, we'll have a complete five-year forecast. The five-year forecast is something that we're continually working on and tweaking throughout this process, beginning when we start to meet with staff and departments and have budget meetings, and then have, you know, financial data come in, you know, through July, you know, August, September, and we continually update it. So, by the time we've determined our budget adjustments that we want to recommend, then we'll have a complete five-year forecast. That'll be complete by the 21st. The 23rd, which is two weeks from tonight, we will have our first public hearing on property tax. And we tend to lead with property tax because we have to have our levy submitted to the county by the end of November. October 29th, I will do a presentation for the community advisory board regarding the budget. That is required by code that they have a meeting that touches on that topic. And plus, we do want to engage the public in the budget process every year as well. November, here is the November timeline, so this is next month. On November 6th, the capital improvements plan will be presented to the committee as a whole. So, normally, we do want to take that plan to committees, and I think in the past, it was taken to committees, and there was a period of time where it was going straight to council, and we wanted to get it back to going to committees before having, presenting it to the council. With the new structure of committees, that means we're going to bring it for discussion at the committee of the hall before it goes to two subsequent council meetings. So, that would be the study session on November 6th. November 7th, which is the next day, the recommended budget adjustments for 2025 and 2026 will be available to the council and public. November 13th, so the second meeting in November, we'll have the second public hearing on property tax, and we'll also have the first reading of the capital improvements plan, and the first reading of the budget adjustments for the budget for 2025 and 2026. And then, in December, after Thanksgiving, so we have, you know, a break for Thanksgiving, we'll come back on December 11th with a second reading for the capital improvements plan and for the budget adjustments. And I do want to mention that between the first readings and the second readings, I'd be available to meet with any council members who might have questions on any of the adjustments or anything like that. So, we can arrange that as well. And then, we are done and ready for questions.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes. I understand that the first notifications have started coming out as of October 1st. Do we have any idea what kind of impact healthcare benefits we're going to have on city budget?
Yeah, that's something we're looking at now. We do have some estimated rate increases. So, there are rate increases. Off the top of my head, I think they can be as much between 4% and 6%.
AJ and I have been talking about that. Do you remember the percentage?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought it was closer to 10. So, since AJ's not on the mic, AJ, our Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director, indicated we were seeing between 10% and 11% rate increases, and so, we are still internally figuring out how much of that, if any, we can absorb, because, of course, we'd like to limit the impact on employees, but we're still figuring that out.
Okay, and do we have, do we have a number of the, is it 200,000, 300,000?
Not yet. I haven't done the calculations on my side yet, so I don't think, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Um, thank you, as always. And, let's see here, what was I gonna, so, now that you're at, has the, has switching to the biennial process gone as expected?
Yes.
No, that's good, you know. And, I mean, were there any challenges to, you know, would you, yeah, is, I guess I'm trying to think of it in terms of when you say, starting from scratch, you know, how much work it saved. Going forward, is it more uncertain this year because it's our first year at it, and will it become more predictable over time, consistent, and, you know, in other words, is it already yielding the benefits you had hoped, or is there sort of a, you know, moving in period?
Well, I would say, for this year, we had time to do some things, such as the investment policy. We are able to work with the consultants on the long-term financial forecast and plan. So, I think those are the kinds of things that showed up that normally we wouldn't get to, or would slide a lot further. So, that was a positive way. And then, I think the other piece was just, had to do with expectations, because I think maybe for me, I'm like, oh, it's an off year. Well, then, it became a budget year real fast. So, so then, we, because we did dig deep in analyzing, and we've been scrubbing the budget pretty hard. So, it feels like a budget year, but just a little less intense, because I don't have to actually create a budget book, which I will next year. But, as far as the process, I think it's gone well. I think we've been able to do more things than just focus on the budget, but also, we've been scrubbing it pretty hard, and so, I think we'll have some adjustments.
Okay. My interest has always been sort of, you know, the reporting thing, and I'll, you know, I'll send you some questions about that, but I'm just, I'm just, you know, it did cause heartburn for the public, and I am assuming that, you know, because things have been juggling a lot, it's just, it'll be interesting to see in year three and four if it becomes this kind of, you know, thing where, yeah, oh, yeah, and just, this will sound incredibly petty, because I know everybody's really jazzed about AI right now, but every time I see a water skiing whatever, I think of electrons on a tree somewhere. I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, go through what you got to go through now citywide, you know, because it's fun, but at some point, I'd be just as happy going back to JPEGs and, yeah, saving a few cents of electricity. Boy, was that petty sounding, but seriously.
All right. So, Councilmember Steinmetz or Councilmember Nutting, neither one of you? I did have one, thank you, I did have one question. You talked about the community advisory board. Is that something that you'll use the cab for, or you have to assemble it?
It's citizen advisory board. That was a typo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. That's nice that we already have that in place then. Okay. That was my only question. All right. Thanks, Jeff. Good work. That's all you have. All right. So, next up, we have our consent agenda. Could the city clerk please read the agenda for us?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, Hempstead Consulting Contract, and that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Councilmember Mahoney for the motion, and Councilmember, well, no, I'll give, I'll give Councilmember Nutting a second. So, is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Harris?
Item two, please.
All right. Item two. So, and any other items? All right. So, we're considering the consent agenda with only one item on it. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, and passing item number two to you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I just pulled this because I have been trying to hint for a while that the city should dedicate lobbying to the airport. This is the year, and it is not the time for a generalist. I understand in past years that Mr. Hempstead provided tremendous value as a generalist on any number of issues, but this is a generational deal, and what I have noticed is that the cities across America that have done better on issues like the SAMP have basically done what we did with Peter Phillips and the ferry. And, you know, you hire a specialist when there are special circumstances, and given that we have no major other asks, we should have somebody who is laser-focused on that stuff, and that's it.
So, I do have a question for you, Councilmember, just in the view of the statement out to the community. This is our legislative advocate, so dealing strictly with the state, and since we have a very active senator who lives in our city, who's extremely knowledgeable and very active and passionate, would you, what else could you want as an expert besides that senator? We hire him to work for our legisla, in our legislature. So, it sounds like you're almost talking a little bit more about port advocacy. I just, I just want the air clear when we've got the messaging going out in the community about what we're doing and not doing. And we are also, have a legal team and an airport committee, and the legal team are experts to work the issue with the port. So, it seems like we've got some experts, passionate people, very articulate, diligent people on both fronts.
I mean, is it, is there a question, or is it a statement?
Um, I'm going to leave it as a statement. So, anything else on this before we move to a vote? Councilmember Mahoney?
I think Mr. Hempstead has been a valuable asset to this community. For every $1,000 we paid him, he's virtually brought us back a million. He's so well-connected down in Olympia, and even to some extent at the federal level, that he's been invaluable all year long. I know that staff has reached out to him, or he's reached out to me on particular issues at any given time, getting, searching out for what we were looking for, maybe answering some questions, things like that. You couldn't have a better friend down in Olympia. I understand it's a business agreement, but he's also the biggest ally we have. Messing with his contract in any way, shape, or form is an absolute mistake. The airport's the airport. It's going to take care of it. I think he can do an admirable job in anything we're trying to push there. But, but even think or consider that we would take away this contract for a year is, is a poor choice, a bad business decision. So, I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Any other comments during the discussion from any other council members? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, and Mr. Hempstead is a superb advocate down in Olympia. He is well-respected by not only the members of our delegation, but of, in both parties. And when it comes to trying to push legislation, he's been tremendously successful, as was indicated before, just even on a dollar-figure amount. So, he is extremely valuable. Even if this is not going to be a big year, it is not the year that we want to eliminate any kind of advocacy on behalf of the city of Des Moines. If there is airport issue, that requires more specificity. We can always find an expert for that if we can find the money to pay for that. But, that would be in addition to Mr. Hempstead's contract, not instead of. That would not be a wise choice at all, I don't think. And so, I would very strongly advocate that we renew his contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more time, Councilmember Harris. Go ahead.
Saying that the airport is the airport is exactly the problem. Again, the airport is like nothing else, and cities that are successful develop an ongoing expertise when it comes to, we are a factory town, and it is insane, or like living next to the Mississippi. It's insane to have no subject matter expertise on such a massive issue, and I would just remind my colleagues who weren't around at the time, that actually, Mr. Hempstead left, was replaced for a year, and then, when we had this previous STANTEC thing, and then came back. So, you know, there is nothing precluding changing direction. It's better to have somebody, if you really want to move an issue, I would just say to people, you know, if you really thought it was important enough to have Mr. Phillips on the ferry, and I would just suggest that the airport is in order of magnitude, more impactful, and leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we've had our discussion on that. All in favor of the forwarding, Mr., oh, thank you. No, we need a motion read. Thank you.
I move to approve the agreement with Hempstead Consulting in an amount not to exceed 93,500 ninety-three thousand five hundred and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Nutting. Thank you. Uh, we already had our discussion, so I'll move straight to the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. I have, uh, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxger, Councilmember Grace Motzui, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris is opposed. Uh, the motion passes six one. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have unfinished business and we are moving into a discussion about our management agreement for Stephen J. Underwood Field. The purpose of this item is for council to consider a management agreement with NWS Holdings for the management of the park. And we have Mike Slevin here to give us a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Slevin, Public Works Director. Uh, we were here a few weeks ago and talked about Perfect Game, um, and, and the Underwood complex. Uh, we've been actually very busy with this, uh, with this project. Um, as everyone knows in the background, for background information, that, uh, we have three baseball fields in the sports complex, uh, at SJU. Uh, we have playground and restroom facilities. Uh, operation maintenance costs are flex, are, are variable, but averaging back, it's about a hundred thousand a year to keep the, keep the place open and operating. And then, of course, post-COVID, a lot of demand for the facilities have died off. A lot of the, the leagues and things that existed prior to COVID went away during COVID and have not reconstituted. So, we have a facility that is really not at the local level being utilized anymore at this time. And of course, uh, we talked a little bit about Perfect Game. This slide's been updated a, a little bit here and I'll explain why. Um, Perfect Game is a, a national USA baseball, um, uh, uh, organization and they have many different regional people that represent them throughout the United States. Uh, it's NWS, Northwest Sports Holdings, um, is the local group that does that. Um, in July, uh, we were approached, um, by Northwest, uh, by NWS to, um, see if they, if we'd be willing to lease, uh, the SJU fields. Uh, and they have the ability to bring in, um, through select sports and other sports, uh, regional sporting events to, to fill those fields and use those fields. And there's actually in the region, a shortage of baseball fields. Um, and it's very difficult to schedule and get them done. Um, as we told you, the, uh, if we approved the lease, we would transfer operations and maintenance of the fields for Perfect Game, so there would be savings to us. Um, and they would program the tournament uses, use, uh, tournament use and activate the fields, bringing regional level baseball into those fields as, as, as a, a use, which brings people into the, into the system. The biggest change between, I think, this and the last one, um, that we briefed, and this all came apparent when we started doing research, because they, I don't know if you've been out there, but they, they've surveyed, um, they're in a really fast track to try to get this done. So, they're out in front of this agreement and they understand that they are at risk. Um, but they wanna get, get it done when they have the weather window, so it's ready for next season. Uh, so they're, they're on it. Um, the big thing we understood was is they were not looking at doing turf fields for just a three-field, um, uh, a, a three-field stadium. They did turf in, because it's, because of the expense. It's much more expensive and it also slows you down with SEPA and other things. But then we discovered, um, as we started going through the plan sets, that the SJU fields, even though they're dirt, were built with under drainage and other, other amenities there, right? So, that allowed us to take a look and add turf fields to this, to this, uh, facility at a much more reasonable rate and without having to use SEPA because it's covered as under maintenance, the maintenance clause of the SEPA. Um, and so, the only permit we're gonna need is what we would've needed anyway to upgrade. And so, they were very excited about that. Turf fields bring more people, are much more desirable, um, are better for the players. So, we went ahead and we updated that. That required us to take a look at the term because turf fields are much, much more expensive. So, the term went from five to 10 because that's the life of the top layer of the turf. Um, Perfect Game would then take over maintenance for existing fields and utilities. The city would maintain the lighting, existing bathrooms and playgrounds, although they are, and I'll go through some of the terms of the agreement right here. Um, they are helping us with those costs. So, it's a 10-year term, as I spoke, and it has one renewable option. So, at 10 years, how that would basically work is, is that turf is a three-level, um, construct. Um, it's actually, so you have your under drainage, which is existing there at SJU. Then you have, uh, when you do turf, you would remove the dirt field, basically scrape down to the drainage layer, and then you fill it with a, uh, a, a drainage-type rock. So, it becomes a porous rock, so the drainage system is used. And then you would top it off with, with, you know, the, the turf field itself. The turf field itself lasts about 10 years of use. Sometimes it's, it's longer, so, but 10 years is the planning factor. Um, and then, so that would be the key to why this is a 10-year term now, instead of a five-year term, is, is that you go, um, at 10 years, they would wanna renew to recoup the cost of replacing the turf on the top, the second, for the second window. Um, the city would re, be reimbursed for our utility costs. We'd be looking at eleven hundred bucks a month for janitorial costs, uh, which is kind of a split because they don't, they're not using it every day and our, we kept them open last year as part of the, as part of the budget process. Um, there's discounts, tournaments, rental, summer youth camp development, all those types of good things. Um, uh, they would carry all the necessary required insurance, best efforts to meet the closure times that came up in the last council meeting. Um, we can schedule additional uses as needed, uh, with, uh, Perfect Game. Um, and then we retain ownership. We approve all the plans and all the improvements they make. We approve the marketing and signage as they will use, um, and any sponsorships they might bring in, we, we have a say in. Um, the big, the terms other than the, the artificial turf, um, and the term, uh, of the lease based upon the artificial turf ad, um, was the hours of operations. From the last meeting, the big takeaways we had were hours of operation limitation, which we have that now, um, resident group discounts, which we've, we've added that, and then the sponsorship for the signage where we would get 20% of that, um, of that revenue if they do sponsor the signs. And then this is an example of what the fields would look like. This is not our fields, but it's a similar field setup, uh, and they found a picture for me, uh, so that I could share it with you. Uh, the outfield, so the, it, the infield would have existing dirt removed, again scraped down, probably six inches is what they're thinking. It might be different, different locations, might go as deep as eight. Um, the dirt would be removed and replaced with the new synthetic turf infields and the, the new drainage rock would go underneath that turf. Um, our outfield would be brought back to tournament condition. They specialize in this, uh, and, and they are, our staff does very good with that, but we are very short-staffed also, right? So, um, they'd be able to give the outfield the attention it needs. Um, and so, the estimated costs of improvements also are much, much higher with the turf fields. Well, we're up to about four to 500,000, they believe is their budget for the, uh, they don't have the exact budget yet, but they're in the four to 500,000 range to, to upgrade the three fields, um, to turf versus the dirt fields. And that was, again, all possible because they didn't realize, they initially contacted us, that we had the under drainage and everything we needed for the turf already in place.
Nice.
And with that, I'm here to answer questions.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Harris?
Um.
And then Councilmember Nutting.
I, uh, sent you an email, but, uh, I would refer to page fifty-eight and fifty-nine of the packet. Um, it talks about this thing called a convenience termination payment. And don't get me wrong, I'm all about that convenience, ma'am. Um, but, um, when he made his presentation, he talked about reconditioning and I was thinking, you know, a couple of Botox injections and, you know, a little bit of, uh, yeah. But, um, this, uh, if it's $500,000, if something didn't work out, it sounds like a significant amount of money that we would be on the hook for. And I'm not saying it's not gonna work out. I'm just saying, um, just, it's, it's like a lot of money.
I would defer that question to our, our city attorney real quick, because he wrote the contract.
Yeah. So, this is, we're talking about convenience. So, if there's a termination based on a breach of a contract where they're not fulfilling what's in here, we can terminate this at no cost. If we decide two years into the contract after they've invested $500,000 that we'd like to go with another operator, we have to pay them a portion of the cost of the improvements.
Yeah.
And that's, there's a formula in here.
I, and I ran the formula on a couple of things and it's like, it's not cheap. And so, I'm wondering, is there any language that we could do to, um, because it is kind of an unknown unknown.
So, yeah. So, if they were to install this.
Yeah.
And on the very next day, we were to terminate this agreement, we would have to pay them 1.2 times the cost. So, if it was 500,000 that they spent, we would have to pay them 600,000 to walk away.
And.
And that is, it is punitive.
Yeah.
To the city because we are entering into an agreement where someone's making a substantial investment. So, we are incentivized to continue with the agreement as long as both parties, uh, continue to hold up their side of the deal. If we were to terminate halfway through, you, the, the formula, and this formula that's in here right now, the general formula is correct, but because we changed some of the terms, we'll have to update this to reflect what the basic provisions are. Um, so, this will change slightly, but the general formula remains the same, that if you were to, if we were to terminate halfway through, essentially we would owe 300,000. Um.
After five years?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I thought it was gonna be, um, okay. Uh, uh, I thought after five years it went down to, you know, fairly negligible. Uh, that's worse than I thought. The other question I have is that, um, it says here that the, uh, in section F, it says additional NWS projects. Do they perceive any additional costs? Because it sounds like they can add on other projects at the discretion of the public works director. And I was wondering if we might change that to, uh, requiring a vote of the city council if it were more than 50 grand. You, you understand what I'm saying here? I, I'm uncomfortable having improve, I mean, you can spend, 50,000 is really easy to run through on something like this, and I'm not comfortable. You're a lovely human being, but, um.
It was intended as a term that was, it was intended to be kind of minor things that may happen during the life of the contract.
Things like increase.
But if the council would like, uh, the ability to review any substantive or major changes, we can absolutely bring those back. We'll, we'll define some type of threshold because the, uh, improvements, uh, considered in here are at NWS's sole cost, but we can put some language there like that.
I'm ju, I'm just saying, because like this is different from what we talked about and then after he, you know, hits the ground.
She said she'd go with it.
Cool.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Grace Motzui.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing up the convenience termination payment. Um, essentially, it looks like the city is the only one who can initiate that cancellation. This is a, uh, termination that only the city can come in because why would, uh, Perfect Game sink in $500,000 and then walk away before their term is over?
They can cancel for cause. I mean, there are.
Right. I'm just talking about for the convenience termination.
Because they put in the investment and we did not.
Right. Exactly. So, it sounds like it, it can only be initiated by the city, not by them. They can't be like, oh, well, now we just quit because.
Because we can make.
Right.
And if they did that, yes, we would owe them nothing.
Yes. So, I'm just talking about the convenience termination. Okay. Um, and the outlay is significantly more than our earlier presentation because they want to move to the synthetic field rather than use the dirt field that we had. Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Up there, uh, you too? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, go ahead.
Yeah. I think that, you know, what a lot of people don't understand is that some kind of a punitive clause is always in a contract if the other party is going to make a significant investment, because you don't want, uh, to, uh, there to be any incentive for the party that's not making the investment to walk away once the investment's been made. I, I don't find anything unusual about, um, this convenience clause, uh, being in the contract. So, uh, and it seems reasonable over the longer period of time, uh, particularly in this contract. Uh, the second question, uh, or comment that I have is, this will still allow Des Moines to, um, host things like the, um, girls softball little league, uh, regional, uh, events that, uh, we did, uh, a summer or two summers ago, uh, and if they can fit it into the schedule with Perfect Game. Is that correct?
Yes. So, in that case, they would go through Perfect Game to use, to rent the fields rather than the city.
All right. So, Perfect Game essentially takes over the scheduling, but it wouldn't preclude those kinds of events.
It does not, but I can't say we would do that like for free or something. I mean, that would be up to Perfect Game.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Harris, I'll call in a moment. I have a comment or a couple of questions and then, uh, so, how many fields does this company service? Aren't they nationwide? Perfect Games?
Approximately. Perfect Game is nationwide, so there'd probably be thousands. This is a, NWS Holdings, he has fields in Washington, Texas, Oregon.
I want some Oregon.
Yeah. So, he, this particular outfit under Perfect Game, it's kind of like a franchise, I guess, um, is in three states and our closest sort of comparator is, uh, Everett has just entered.
So, it's not a mom and pop.
No.
Or, operation. And they've been in business for, must've been a long time to acquire that many fields, right? I mean, decades.
I, I don't know the exact.
Mayor.
Just trying to establish the credibility of the.
Perfect Game is a nas, yeah, Perfect Game is a national, long-term national company. And then, um, Northwest, uh, NWS has been around for a while. I know my kids played, they were, they were around.
Just establishing the credibility of the relationship and contract, you know, because it's not gonna be like you. So. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Um, so, since they've already been out surveying and stuff like that, um, what's the latest they can start work before getting this done this year?
Um, Councilmember, I don't know the answer to that yet because I know they have, I've spoken with their, um, sports field landscape architect. He's prepping plans. He's waiting for the survey, which is supposed to be done early next week. Um, they're hoping to get started maybe sometime in November, um, with the construction, but we still have, uh, we do have the one grading permit to get and that's gonna be dependent upon when they get us the plans and if the plans meet our standards. So, there is time to get it ready for next season. Um, they're trying to beat the rain window. It's a lot more difficult to construct, of course, in a rainy season. So, they're, they're working, uh, pretty quickly. So, it could be, we could have these fields in, uh, you know, by January or February, or it might be later depending on weather. Um, but they're trying to get going as fast as possible. I have not seen their construction schedule at this time.
Okay. Uh, it, thank you. In that case, I would make a motion to, um, have the city bring back a revised contract for a final vote at our next meeting.
What was the revision?
The revision was, uh, Schedule F, or Section F, I should say, um, so that anything over $50,000 would be, uh, subject to a council vote.
Could you make that a motion and pass it today so that we don't need to bring this back in a couple of weeks?
Um, I would also like to see the city, uh, take a look at this, um, convenience termination thing. This seems like risk.
Okay. So, you've got two issues there. Could you make a motion on the first? And then if you've got a second thing, then you can either make a motion or ask on that.
Yeah.
So, if you'd like the first thing, the $50,000.
Would you allow me to speak for myself, ma'am? Thank you. Um, uh, yes, I would move to have the city, uh, go back to NWS or whoever and, um, see about the, uh, termination schedule, um, percentage. Um, this seems onerous to me, um, to be, uh, a lot can happen in five years.
Just, so, your motion, you made your motion. Do I have a second on that? Okay, motion fails. Did you wanna make a motion on the $50,000 threshold?
I would.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to revise, uh, have the city come back at the next meeting with revised language for, uh, Section F.
Do I have a second on that? Motion fails for a lack of a second. Okay. So, do I have a motion, uh, in the, as stated in the packet? Councilmember Mahoney?
I move to approve the management agreement with NWS Holdings for the management, improvement and operation of the Stephen J. Underwood baseball fields and authorize the city manager to sign the contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Nutting. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, Councilmember Nutting, uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxger, Councilmember Grace Motzui, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed. Motion passes six one. Thank you. And thank you, Mike. Appreciate the. And thank you, Mike. Appreciate the presentation and the work. Okay, next up, we have our public safety sales tax presentation. Our, uh, Finance Director Jeff Friend is coming forward. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider a second reading for the enactment of a public safety sales tax.
Good evening again, Mayor, uh, council, uh, members of the public. Uh, before we get started, uh, there is a slide with a motion on it, and the motion is not correct. The correct motion is the one that appears in the agenda item. Um, it did not get updated from last week, so apologies. Um, public safety sales tax. Um, background, uh, the legislature this year passed, uh, ESHB, a House Bill 2015. Uh, it provides, uh, local criminal justice funding, uh, for creating, by creating a local law enforcement grant program and a council manic sales and use tax for criminal justice purposes. So the legislation grants counties and cities in Washington State, uh, the opportunity to increase sales tax by, uh, 0.1 percent, uh, to fund, uh, public safety, uh, needs. And, um, this is the second reading, so the original, the first time this was brought up to council was, uh, on September 25th. The first reading was last week, and this is the second reading. So requirements for imposing the tax. A law enforcement agency must comply with, uh, policy and practice requirements related to officer training, use of force reporting, de-escalation, and firearm relinquishment, relinquishment procedures. Uh, they must submit proof of this to, uh, the Criminal Justice Training Center, uh, for compliance. Uh, that has been submitted, uh, by the city, um, so our submission, uh, to the Training Center is complete. The city or county, the taxing district, must receive funding, uh, from a criminal justice sales tax. Pretty much every city in the state receives the criminal justice sales tax. Uh, the City of Des Moines does receive that, so we check that box. And, uh, the other requirement is that voters have not rejected a criminal justice sales tax in the prior 12 months. Uh, so basically, if the voters have told you they don't want it in the last 12 months, then you can't have council... Council can't just override that and then approve this tax. Uh, we have not had a sales tax, uh, on the ballot. I don't even know if we have ever had, so, uh, we meet that requirement as well. And the Des Moines Police Department meets all the requirements, um, on the slide. Permissible uses of funds, uh, the legislation has a pretty broad, uh, definition of, um, what the funds can be used for. Uh, they are restricted to criminal justice purposes. Uh, has been brought up, can the city restrict it more, uh, the uses of the funds more than the state? Uh, the answer is yes. Uh, activities, but the criminal justice purposes are activities that substantially assist the criminal justice system, which may include circumstances where ancillary benefit to the civil justice and behavioral health system occurs. Uh, this includes domestic violence programs, public defender staffing, diversion programs, programs to reduce homelessness, community outreach and assistance programs, alternative response programs, and mental health crisis, uh, response. Uh, there's also, so these are items that are all like where the crime begins and the effects of the crime. Uh, the question also is, how would the City of Des Moines, uh, use the funds? Uh, has been suggested perhaps, uh, the city creates a special revenue fund, uh, to keep track of the costs that we pay. Uh, and, uh, the plan would be, if we had these funds, that we would be able to fund an officer. Uh, also, uh, fund, uh, animal control and an increase to, uh, public defender costs. Uh, cause other legislation, I believe, has resulted in those costs increasing as the caseload for, uh, public defenders is limited now, uh, to certain amount of cases. Uh, there's a grant piece also, as we mentioned, um, last week and in this presentation. So there's a sales tax piece where the taxing district, city or county, can increase the sales tax. And then there's a grant program. In order to get funds from the grant program, one of the requirements is that you've implemented the sales tax increase. So if the city were to, uh, increase the sales tax and apply for funds, uh, from the grant program, the question was asked last week, uh, what, what, what does that look like? How much money would we get? Um, so the, and the chief last week explained that that's for seeding new staffing of law enforcement. It would be 125,000 dollars per new officer, per year, for three years. And you can't supplant, uh, officers that already are there. So it's really for growing, uh, the amount of, uh, law enforcement positions, uh, that you already have. Uh, financial impact, uh, so to the city, uh, and the city's residents, the sales tax increase, uh, would be from 10.2% uh, to 10.3%. Uh, the example we used was if someone were to purchase a pair of shoes for 100 dollars in the City of Des Moines, uh, currently, the tax on that would be 10 dollars and 20 cents. Uh, with this tax rate increase, the tax on, uh, a 100 dollar pair of shoes, uh, would be 10 dollars and 30 cents. So it would be a 10 cent increase. Uh, annual proceeds for the city is estimated to be about, uh, 450,000 dollars. And then potential uses of funds, as I mentioned, um, police recruitment and retention, increased public defender costs, uh, increased jail costs, mental health crisis response, and alternative response programs. Uh, so those are available uses, um, we've narrowed it down to like, we're, you know, funding a police officer, um, and animal control and increased public defender costs. Des Moines Police Department will also be eligible to receive, uh, the 2015 grants to fund hiring, retaining, and training, uh, law enforcement officers. Uh, there's a timing element, uh, to increasing the sales tax. If this was, uh, the increase was gonna be effective by January 1st, the deadline to notice the Department of Revenue is October 18th. Uh, basically, they require a seven-day, uh, 75-day lead time. Uh, if it was gonna be effective April 1st, uh, the deadline for notice would be January 16th. And for July 1st, would be April 17th of next year. Uh, next steps, uh, should council adopt the ordinance establishing the tax, staff will bring back a future item to establish the re, special revenue fund. And council may choose to adopt the state legislation language or a narrow dis, definition, assuming compliant with the state legislation, uh, for the use of the fund. So they can be restricted further than the state does, if that's what the council chooses to do. And then this is not a suggested motion, but the one in the packet would be, uh, the suggested motion.
All right, thank you. Do, any questions before the motion? Uh, Councilmember Grace Motzui.
Yeah, I wanted to hear a little bit more about, um, your recommendation about the special revenue fund and if that is something that's truly needed.
Um, I think the benefit would be that it would make the, uh, use of the funds more transparent. Um, and the fund would be audited as part of our, uh, well, everything's audited every year by the state. But it would be called out, and then so, it, it just makes it a little bit more, uh, transparent.
Thank you. Any other questions before the motion? Councilmember Oxger.
So these grants are at the discretion of the legislature, correct?
That's correct. They would need to be funded for us to receive funds.
So if we fund officers with grant money, we're basically in the same kettle of fish we've had, where we're ju, using one-time-only monies to, to bolster our police department?
Well, yes and no. So here's what I would say. My plan would be that if the council adopts this and we get the revenue that we expect, uh, we would fund an additional officer and take advantage of the grant if we get it accepted. Um, but our plan, and even if we were not getting this grant, I would recommend we hire another officer with these funds at 100% of the cost being absorbed by the city immediately. So I do not view this position as something that goes away after three years. I view this as like kind of a, a bonus to, to ease what comes in. But as we've talked about numerous times, it's very important to me that we increase the staffing of sworn officers. And so regardless of the grant, I would be absolutely recommending you hire another officer with this. So I don't know if that answers the question. So it's one time, but I'd do it anyways.
Well, the only thing I'm, I'm questioning is, is there some way that we can, that we can use the grant monies in such a way that we're not funding a position for it? I mean, shifting, shifting funds around so that, so that we're hiring the position and we're hiring it, you know, with the, I, I, I don't like this idea that, you know, the position can suddenly go away if, at the discretion of the legislature or anything else. I mean, it's, um, where are the cuts gonna come? So that's, that's what I'm nervous about.
Yeah, I understand, cause the seed funding is only for salary. It cannot be used for other costs, and it's 125,000 per officer for three years.
I, I agree with Councilmember Oxger, but I, I'm seeing this as more of a cost sharing. So basically, the state is saying, we'll pay, we'll help you recruit, we'll help you increase the number of officers you have by def, deferring some of the costs, absorbing some of the costs ourselves. And then that funding will go away, but it will not, uh, the position will not disappear.
That would not be my intent. Now, what the city's situation is in a few years, I can't predict. I would absolutely not wanna cut there, but then again, I look at what happened to the city in the last year as well, so... But yes, it is more of a cost share, cause the cost of an officer is well over 200,000 dollars. That doesn't mean their salary for the public, it's really when you factor in benefits. So yes, we're still putting in a significant chunk. Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I, I think it does behoove us to be very judicious about the grant, uh, taking grant money. We are entitled to do that for three officers, as I understand this. And, uh, you know, at this point, I don't think it would make sense to do more than one, because presumably, uh, at least the projection on what we're going to take in on the sales tax revenue would be enough to fund that one officer, should the, the state grant funding go away. Um, but I would be reluctant to commit to two or three more officers until we know we have a stable source to do that. And I think that's, you know, part of our discretion in budgeting, um, to do that, rather than trying to do something, you know, just being reckless and throwing it out there and hope it's gonna be there, cause I don't think we can count on that.
So before we continue this cons, this part of the conversation, I do wanna recognize that the motion is in regard to enacting a sales tax and that any grant funding in the future is u, up to our discretion, and that will be a future conversation. So I would like to keep the conversation to simply, did we want to enact this ordinance that allows us to ha, to go for a grant in the future or not, but do we want the sales tax? Uh, Councilmember Harris.
Um, I have a question, um, and just data nerd thing. When you get your sales tax, um, information from the county, does it break out how much of these purchases are from Des Moines residents? Probably not, but if it did, that would be lovely.
Well, we get the, the sales tax information we get, it would get from the state, and we, um, what's reflected is the businesses who have collected sales tax and have paid it to the state, not the people who...
There's no way to determine how many of those purchases come from people who live here?
Not necessarily, no.
Darn. Thank you.
Just one more opportunity for me to pitch shop at home from your couch, because all of your sales tax that you, when you purchase something on Amazon, all the sales tax goes to City of Des Moines. If you go to South Center, sales tax goes to Taquilla, just saying. So, all right. Any other, uh, Councilmember Nutting?
I'm just wanting to make the motion, Mayor.
Oh, all right. Any other, just one more opportunity for another comment? Oh, yeah. Excuse me, questions? Uh, all right, go ahead and make the motion. Thank you. Uh, I'm not hearing you, Jer, uh, Councilmember.
Sorry, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Technical difficulties. Oh. I move to approve draft ordinance 25-053, imposing a public safety, sales, and use tax.
Have a second? Councilmember Mahoney for the second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I asked Jeff for that little thing, because, um, you know, anecdotes are worth what you pay for them. But, um, when I just ran a back-of-the-neck on the amount of sales tax that I paid last year on purchases in Des Moines, um, it was like 11 bucks and, um, you know, cause food and so on and that. Um, so I just, I heard many concerns from the residents about how it would affect them. And what I think is that the effect on the people who live here will be somewhat negligible. And that increased my enthusiasm dramatically, and that's it.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Mahoney?
I said this last time, truth is, to get even close to the state average of police per capita, we need another 3.5 million dollars. This is 13% of the way. Um, I mean, for anything to make and ensure our public is safer, this gives us a vehicle to start the steps to get there. So I'm gonna support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ditto. Happy to support it. I'm, I'm glad that we're getting this tool, so... Uh, all right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Nutting, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, council, it's unanimous, 7-0. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Next up is new business, and, uh, we are gonna be receiving a presentation from Tyler Beakley. This is, uh, our OpenGov asset management software, and the purpose of this item is to seek council approval to purchase asset management software. Take it away, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, I have some co-presenters with me tonight. I have Tim with OpenGov and Max Miso, our own GIS administrator with the city. Um, so tonight, we're gonna be covering what is OpenGov? Why it's in the best interest in the city to purchase OpenGov? And then I'll get a, end it with a little bit of the financial impact, and then, of course, questions. So to start, I'll turn it over to Tim to introduce what OpenGov is.
Great. Yeah, I'm Tim Schmidt, and, uh, I am the Asset Management Specialist. I knew it was you two. Uh, at OpenGov, and yes, I worked with, uh, Councilmember Mahoney 30 years ago at Crystal Mountain, so good to see you. Exactly. Um, so I'm Asset Management Specialist here at, uh, for OpenGov here in the Northwest. And, uh, actually, I'll jump in here. Uh, OpenGov is a company dedicated to providing technology for government. Uh, we work with over 2,000 agencies across the country, uh, including dozens here in the Northwest. Um, the OpenGov public procurement or public service platform has everything from financials, procurement, permitting, and licensing, and asset management, which is what we're talking about today. Um, and the public service platform is really dedicated to helping governments to be more efficient and effective and transparent. Um, here's just a sampling of some of the other agencies in the area that, uh, use, uh, the asset management platform. Of course, you recognize Auburn, Gig Harbor, Isqwa, some of the other local agencies. And this is just, uh, a sampling of them. So, uh, the reason why this project is important is because of this thing called the Asset Management Maturity Model. Now, what that means is that basically, it's a, it's a way of how do we manage our assets to get the most out of them? And the Asset Management Maturity Model comes from the American Public Works Association, which is the authority for public works, uh, nationally, of course. And so this model has basically five steps to it, and it really has two purposes. One is to, uh, evaluate your asset management program. That is, how well do we do managing our assets? And then secondly, how do we get better at managing those assets over time? This isn't the kind of thing where you turn on the technology, snap your fingers, and everything's done. It's about a process of getting better. And in this model or in this process, basically, it's at five stages. The first is what I call management by memory. Basically, you have to remember what you have, where it's at, what's been done, and what needs to be done. It works fine when people have been with the city for 37 years, they remember everything about it. But when people leave, assets get older, become more complicated, it doesn't work anymore. That's when you, things fall through the cracks, uh, gets more expensive, you get these unexpected expenses. expensive bills to fix things, and you have failures of major assets. So, as you move up the ladder or up the step, you start to get to a point where we're managing the work orders, managing the process, tracking resources, and eventually, we want to get to the point where we're making data-driven decisions. That is where we're not relying upon guestimates about what should be done, or the squeaky wheel about the things that need to be done. We're making data-driven decisions. So, that's what we're talking about here. So, the OpenGov Asset Management Platform is a tool for doing all of that. And so, one of the key things, as we talked about, is the data. And so, we want to make that data actionable. And so, this is just an example of a dashboard. Each staff person would have their own dashboard, their own look at the information, and how do they use this to make decisions about what they're doing, keep track of things. As you can see, a lot of information, everything from, you know, how much did we spend? What do we have? What does it need? And how are we doing on our goals? Going into that, of course, is the assets. That is, what do we have? And this gives you an idea, you know, what do we have, where it's at, what's its condition, what's its criticality factor? In other words, if that fails, what is the impact on the community? Is it an inconvenience, or is bridges falling down and people getting hurt, right? So, these are the kinds of things around the asset. A program like this, though, really, the success of it actually hinges on this very simple thing, the mobile tools. So, this is the key to adoption, because if we don't have good tools, people won't use it. And so, the OpenGov platform is a mobile-first platform. That is, the staff that, that's the eighty percent of staff that are gonna use it, which are the ones out in the field. They can see when they're doing their work, that history of the assets and the things that have been done, and they're recording their information in real time, rather than having to remember and still writing it on paper and like doing the whiteboard. So, it's a more interactive process, which ultimately will result in having better data, better decisions, better adoption. This is really the key. We want to make it easier than paper. When it's easier than paper, people adopt it. And I'd just point out, as your evaluation process, we came in for a couple of sessions, showed the staff how the software works, and got the buy-in and acceptance from the staff in the field. But all of this then comes to the capital planning. How do we use this information? And when we have all of that data and we get to those higher levels of that Asset Management Maturity Model, which I talked about, that's where you get to, okay, I got X amount of money. What do I need to spend it on to have the biggest impact? Or, we have an initiative, oh, we need to improve the roads in the city. What is that actually gonna cost, and how does that translate into actual actionable work? And so, that's where the platform comes from. That's where we take you from the very beginning up to the higher levels. And I was supposed to add that on that Asset Management Maturity Model, so you have a technology now, which Max, of course, is gonna talk about. But because of some of the things that we've talked about, you're about in that one and a half to maybe two on the scale. So, you've taken some steps. You're not still reliant upon somebody's memory, but we need to make those higher levels.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Musso. I'm your GIS administrator for the city, and I am kind of the support on the backend when it comes to these asset management programs. So, right now, we use a program called CityWorks. It's, we adopted it in two thousand and twelve, and then and still now, it's one of the biggest asset management, you know, software suites around. But it is a little bit clunky. The model we currently have is the pay-per-user model, which limits us on, you know, who we can give out to logins to. And so, yeah, that's, I mean, I'm just kind of going over the current system. So, it's on-premise, which means it's on a server here, and that's something I maintain and administer. It integrates with our GIS, which is good, because the, where our asset inventory is held is actually outside of the Asset Management Program, which it reads it, and then it keeps track of work history and inspections and whatnot on our assets. And that'll come into play later. And it's, it is underutilized by our staff, just because the learning curve on it is, it doesn't, the juice isn't worth the squeeze when some staff learns how to configure it or use it how they might want to, other than in the field. By the time they've learned it, the next time they have to do it, it's, they have to relearn it. So, it's not as intuitive as we would like for more people to use it. And so, how I mentioned, it was on-premise before. They are moving to a cloud-based system, and they will sunset the on-premise support starting July in two thousand and twenty-seven. And so, for that fact, we started looking at, okay, we're moving, we're going to have to move to the cloud sometime, and that, that just, it's a cost to migrate there anyways. So, let's see, maybe there's some kind of improvement, we might be able to find, which led us to OpenGov. And so, I'll go over some of the benefits we would have with OpenGov. It's unlimited users, so we can, yeah, everybody has their own logins, and so, it keeps track of people on an individual basis. It's cloud-based, so we, the onus isn't on me to update and maintain our server or our program, which is great, because it gives me time to do other things. Yeah, so, it also utilizes our GIS, so the benefit of that is that, you know, we can still have our asset data, like onsite, and do more with that, but it reads it. And then, a great thing about it is that it allows for a quality control. So, it's more friendly for users to be able to update assets and also what they're doing in the field, and it has a QC process that another person can make sure that those changes are accurate. Whereas in the CityWorks, you kind of, if you give out that ability, you kind of just have to trust them. And it's more user-friendly for all the roles. So, how I mentioned, it was an odd learning curve for the CityWorks. It's more intuitive, which adds for, it's, you know, better for people, like retention for, you know, configuration or how they might want to use it. Work orders exist independent of assets, so I can't, I don't want to get into that. It's pretty technical, but it's, there's a benefit there. A good thing about it, though, is that the, it's a, it provides a really efficient and easy way for leads to direct their crew where they need to be doing their work orders. CityWorks doesn't have that. This does. So, somebody say they think they know what they're going to do the next day, but it's going to rain. Well, when they get in, their lead can change what work orders they might be doing that day, and they would see that updated within their login. And then, you know, as things progress, it paves way for project prioritization. So, you know, when we have bigger projects that incorporate multiple assets as a whole, or, you know, create a, like, you know, larger projects that incorporate multiple types of assets, it helps to plan for those, yeah, for when they do happen. So, yeah, that's all I've got for you. Sorry if I got too technical, but it's hard to not when that's what I do.
Thank you, Max. And lastly, the financial impact. So, of course, there's gonna be an implementation fee. That's OpenGov building the actual software package and creating it for Des Moines-specific, for creating workflows, bringing in all our assets, creating the menus that we want and that our staff want. We also have to bring all the CityWorks data over from CityWorks into OpenGov, and then, of course, train our staff on the program. So, that's about seventy-eight K in total. But luckily, we do have a surface water grant that we're proposing to use to cover that cost to the Department of Ecology. And then below, you see the four modules that we're purchasing. One for surface water management, one for transportation, one for parks, and one for facilities. And those are their annual fees. There's a small fee in there for two thousand and twenty-five as we roll into two thousand and twenty-six, but that's very close to what you'll see on an annual basis. Surface water, you'll note, is much larger than the rest. That's because of how much surface water is needed, how many assets we have, how many custom assets we have, and how much reporting requirements we have to the Department of Ecology. So, it's just more of a robust tool that we use within surface water. And with that, we have a motion for you to consider, and happy to answer any questions.
Right. Any questions before the motion? Councilmember Harris.
So, what are we paying now?
Currently, for CityWorks, and Max can maybe have a better number, but I believe it's around twenty K annually, but it's not apples-to-apples. Currently, we're only paying for surface water management and a small portion of transportation assets. So, we're looking to expand into parks, and we're looking to expand into facilities, and also expand outward with transportation assets.
That was actually my next question. How universal is this? Does this cover the marina? Fishing piers?
It, so, right now, the marina is not on board as a separate enterprise.
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, can it cover basically everything down to wire bundles or maintenance things? You know what I'm saying? I'm just-
I do. Maybe Tim would have a better answer for you.
I can answer that question. So-
And if not, I just don't-
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. So, there are additional assets. We have different kind of packages for different kinds of assets. But for things like in the marina, these would be what we would call custom assets that you can configure and do yourself. So, that would be something that could be done within the context of the, what's being provided.
Okay, cool. I'm almost done, but back to Tyler. So, does this integrate, or is this the mobile inspection thing the guy does with the storm drains and?
Yes. Yes. So, this would be, we would outfit our full crew with iPads. This would be how they're tracking all their work in the field and tracking their day-to-day activities.
Not separate apps. This is the thing?
This would be the thing.
Okay.
Yep.
And all the work orders at the parks and the stuff, it's all just-
It would be all one.
A universe.
Correct.
Are there any add-ons required for integration into the Arcus, Gis, whatever it's called? I mean, or is that-
No, so, that's the thing. So, it, I think, I mean, I think it can work without it, but it works, I think, better with it, because it's, what it does, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but you can either have your assets held within OpenGov if you don't have a system like our GIS, or you can have it read our, the assets that we hold in our GIS, and it can communicate back and forth. But that's not, that's not an add-on. That's just how it works.
Okay, last thing. Is this also the tree thing, moving forward?
It can grow into the tree thing. We are not building it outright to include the tree thing, but as the tree, as the tree program evolves and becomes real, we can roll it into OpenGov at a later date. Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions before the motion? I can't see Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Any questions, you two? All right. Councilmember Mahoney.
So, we're talking ninety-eight K annually, and it looks like fifty-three thousand by the stormwater. So, that had obviously come out of their fund. And right now, we're paying, you said, twenty-eight K?
Around twenty K, I believe.
Twenty K?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the other forty-five thousand would come out of each of those departments as are put in their budget for the general fund. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, in the packet, we're gonna, and speaking with the director, we're gonna roll it into an existing operational budgets of the, each program. So, facilities and parks and transportation.
Is there anything that we have that may be costing us money then that it's replacing in those three areas?
I don't know if we've looked at it at that level of detail yet.
I think it's really just about overall efficiency.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's probably things that are being done that aren't being recorded that are a cost to us. This just makes it more streamlined and puts it all in one place, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions before the motion? All right. Do I have a motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Mahoney.
I move to approve the purchase of the OpenGov Asset Management Software identified in the attachment. One for the total amount of one, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, ninety-four cents, authorize a management reserve of fifteen thousand, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Nutting for the second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Harris.
My enthusiasm is, I've shared this, it's an old guy joke, but your predecessor, Lauren and Dan, I used to do this thing where I'd say, you know, hey, man, there's a problem with such-and-such a thing, and he'd just look at me like, no, there isn't. He had an encyclopedic that's not hyperbolic. He, like, every storm drain swaled, like, and I am, like, enjoying this vote very much. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else? All right. We've got a motion on the table, and discussions overall. In favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Great. Great. Thank you for being here. Great presentation. Thank you so much. All right. Up next, we have a telecommunications franchise agreement presentation. And Attorney Tara Vaughn, City Attorney Tara Vaughn is coming up. The purpose of this item is for council to conduct a first reading of a franchise agreement with Forged Fiber. And, yeah, that's it. Welcome, Tara. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As Mayor just mentioned, I'm here to go over the first reading of draft ordinance twenty-five zero-eight-five, which is a telecommunications franchise agreement with Forged Fiber thirty-seven. So, since the council has already passed three telecommunications franchise agreements within the last twelve months, this is probably not new information to you, but just as a reminder, a franchise agreement authorizes an entity to make use of city rights of way to furnish its services to the public. This is a list of what it does and it doesn't do. It does define our responsibilities, both for the vendor and the city. It doesn't allow the vendor to build without city approval. They would still have to pay all applicable permitting fees. And it doesn't limit our utility taxes or limit our cost recovery for staff time. So, Forged Fiber thirty-seven is owned by AT&amp;T, and they submitted a telecommunications franchise application in July of this year. They're currently in the process of acquiring assets from Lumen, which are already currently in the city right-of-way under an existing franchise agreement. So, if successful, Forged Fiber would then replace Lumen under that franchise agreement. However, they do want to expand their services beyond the current Lumen assets so that they can reach more citizens. Some of the key terms of this agreement are that it would be a ten-year agreement with reevaluation after five years to address any issues. It would then extend, there's a possibility for it to extend an additional ten years unless either party provides notice to the other. Forged Fiber would be responsible for any relocation costs, subject to, they would be subject to all of our permitting requirements. They would be required to carry five million dollars of liability insurance coverage. They would be required to remove any facilities that have been abandoned in the right-of-way at their own expense, but we would have the option to allow them to abandon in place. The language of our vacation section reflects our current practice and doesn't hinder our ability to vacate the right-of-way. We would just have to give notice to Forged Fiber and allow them to get an easement if necessary. So, for the costs and fees, Forged Fiber would pay a five-thousand-dollar one-time franchise fee. They would pay actual costs to the city for future staff time spent to administer the agreement. And they would pay all applicable permitting costs for work done under the franchise. And as this is a first reading, the motion is to pass the draft ordinance to a second reading.
All right. Thank you so much, Tara. Any questions before the motion? All right. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney, and then I'll give, go ahead.
I move to pass draft ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-eight-five regarding a telecommunications franchise agreement with-
with Forged Fiber 37 to a second reading on October 23, 2025.
And second, I'm going to give that to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz tonight. Any discussion? All in fiber, favor, fiber? All in favor, raise your right hand. It looks like it's unanimous. Great. Thank you so much. All right. Next up is new agenda items for consideration. Right before we, we will be dismissing for an executive session shortly, but I do have an ask with regard to putting a new, putting something on a future agenda. So, as I mentioned last time, I gave a report out of conversation and activity at Puget Sound Regional Council's Executive Board. And right now, as Councilmember Mahoney mentioned earlier on in the meeting, the Transportation Policy Board reviews transportation situations in the four county region, and then it goes to the Executive Board for approval. They have a few options right now that they're considering for our regional transportation plan under PSRC. And in our meeting, when we were getting our briefing a couple weeks ago, we were given some briefing materials, including this map. This is the preferred, this is the preferred plan that the Executive Board will probably approve, which has been forwarded through the Transportation Policy Board. And what was significant to me is that there are some passenger ferry routes on this map, but not the ones that, and this is again, just as a reminder, like, we've got a transportation improvement plan that is a wish list, right? Everything that we would really like in the city of Des Moines, it's not that they're funded. It's like, but we put these things on our plan so that if money comes down the pike or something happens, we, we can, we can justify the fact that, yes, we really are planning this thing. So this is the same thing. So you see these passenger ferry routes on Lake Washington and Seattle de Baldo and all that. But I noticed that there are not, that the routes that we desire and that Vashon desires are not on this. And so my ask is that we figure out a way to get our desired routes on this map, just in case. Just in case money comes down the pike, just in case passenger ferry funding comes from the federal government. We also have, and what I wanted to also mention, I know there was, sometimes there is a messaging like, hey, we're the only marina between Seattle and Tacoma. If there's a ferry run, they're automatically going to stop here. Well, here's the thing. Pierce County Executive Ryan Mello is in, is also on the board with me. And so I stopped him in the hallway because you might have seen in the news lately that Pierce County, he secured $2 million for a pilot with Artemis. It's a electric foil ferry. But he needs a couple million dollars more. But he's working it. And so I saw that in the, in the news, and I cornered him in the hallway and said, hey, do you want to, I'm calling it an airport stop. Even, so, I made, I made the exercise. I thought, that's going to sound better than Des Moines. And he's like, well, Mayor, you know, the more stops we make, the less ability we're going to be able to call it a fast ferry, you know? So he, he's not super amenable to stopping it at the airport, even when it called us the airport. So he just is anxious to get his pilot in the water. And so what that tells me is it depends on who's talking the hardest and who gets the most money from tourism dollars or whatever. And we might not automatically get our stop, even though we have proximity to the airport. So, so I think it's important to see if we can get our routes on this map. And, and we can't get it on right now, but if we do some good prep work, get it on our TIP, we might be able to get it on in two years. And in the meantime, we also can get some language. I'm working with Pierce County Executive Mello to get some language at least. We're not going to get a route on a map, but we might get some language in the plan. So my ask is, can we, can we get on a future agenda to consider one amendment to our transportation improvement plan to add a desired ferry route? So if I have three nods, I can get it on a future agenda? Yeah, just looking for three nods. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Good. Yes, you may.
What kind of route are we talking about? I mean, what, what vessel? Or you're just talking about any vessel?
Just whatever we can get somebody to put on that map. So we, so when the agenda item comes forward, you can put a triangle route on there. The council can decide if we want to just put Seattle to Des Moines, if we want to put Des Moines, Vashon, Seattle. I would recommend the triangle because then you get the power of Teresa Moscata with you as well as whoever ends up in seat number five. So, with, for King County. All right. Thank you. That's all I wanted for that. I appreciate it. Okay, so now, the council will dismiss to executive session for the purpose of discussing the performance of a public employee under RCW 42.30.1101G. The council is going to break for five minutes and then convene to the executive session, which is expected to last for 20 minutes. So that we will reconvene here at eight, I'm going to call it 8:20, is that right? 8:20. So we have a five-minute break so that she can get those guys hooked in.
City Council meeting is now reconvened. The next thing up is council member reports, and first up is council member Mahoney. Oh, sorry, oh, I can do that. Council member Grace Motsuwe, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I'm ready.
Are you serious? Okay.
It's pretty simple. The city manager alluded to it a little bit, but Saturday morning, Russ Higley and I did an interview, and basically we were requesting that we'd get volunteers to come down and take the sea life off of the docks and the pilings down at the marina. Tremendously successful, probably had about sixty people there. Let's put it so successful, they were, all the volunteers that were on the docks, that were divers, were required to wear life vests, and I had to get ahold of staff at the marina to get additional life vests because we had so many people. They worked diligently, both in the water and out of it, and I know that, like the past, when they saved over a thousand creatures, and were able to place them in new habitat, given a chance, and so it was very successful. And the information and so forth that was posted on the news went viral, and I think there's a lot of positive feedback. I know that when we go to do the third one, the same will happen, and I encourage my colleagues and anybody in the community to definitely volunteer. It's, you'd be surprised, there was everything from, it'll be the octopus to, you know, starfish and other things that came out of this. So it was a really good thing, and as far as the PR toward the city of Des Moines, was really positive of how we balance progress with environment.
Yes, sir.
Will we be doing the same thing with regard to the Redondo Pier?
I can answer that. Being that I've seen underneath the Redondo Pier, there's not near the life, but they'll definitely do that, a lot of the divers that are over there. It would, it just wouldn't be so structured, it wouldn't be near the animals and so forth, but there'll be something done.
And, well, okay, it's just another question. We set the, the third of November is the groundbreaking shovel-ready whatever for the...
For the pier, yep, and I'd let Redondo Community Association know.
Okay, and is, I just got some information today that the contractor may be ready to go sooner?
That would be new information to me.
Okay.
We were looking to kind of deal with schedules and stuff, so I mean, they can begin work before we do a groundbreaking, it's really just ceremonial.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Grace Motsuwe.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to report today. I do hope that folks take advantage of many of the community activities that are happening here in October, including a How Halloween event downtown. I know that we have folks who are working on a city-sponsored dance, I believe, that's going to happen on the eighteenth, someone else might...
Boo Bash.
Boo Bash, thank you, someone else might speak more about that. We have Rotary and Waterland Pride are sponsoring a drag bingo coming up on the twenty-fourth. Sadly, I will not be able to attend, but I wish everyone a happy Halloween in that regard. And we also have, it's quite a great presentation today by the Friends of Saltwater State Park, which just reminds me of how many great volunteer activities there are in Des Moines, and so many ways that folks can get involved, whether you're passionate about marine life, saving baby octopuses...
And starfish.
And starfish, or whether it's counting salmon, or doing tests for the acidity level in McSorley Creek, or whether it's working with people at the food bank. There's just so many great opportunities, and I encourage folks to seek out how they can give back to Des Moines, and we'll see you next time, thank you.
Thank you. For, note for the record, that council member Nutting left the meeting at eight twenty-four. Council member Harris.
Thank you. I was extremely pleased to see Rota Green here. The Friends of Saltwater State Park were one of the first recipients of the Airport Community Ecology Fund when it was created, which I was happy to be a participant in. It is amazing how much work they put into it, but the program is so onerous, and, yeah, I, you know, they are always extremely cheerful about it, but the fact is, is that they need ten X. the help. And I don't know how to balance, you know, having a cheerful disposition about it and recognizing the absolute need there. For example, there, the guy Bob, he provides water quality monitoring there, which has detected more than one code violation in the area. I attended the SAMP webinar, and that was kind of, you know, sparsely attended. researchers who will be doing the air quality monitoring station. They are happy to report that they seem to be able to get the hut, the enclosure for next to nothing, which is really good and will save them us some money. But I will just, anecdotally, I, you know, because everyone's younger than me, um, they pointed out that, um, lead was, uh, lead and PM two fives became criteria pollutants, meaning they can be monitored and regulated by the state and the EPA in nineteen ninety-seven. Nineteen ninety-seven, and everybody thinks it's been forever and PM two fives now, you know, wildfire smoke and so forth. Um, and there's been nothing ever since then. What happened here with, after the third runway is essentially people just became totally inured. The people who care about pollution and the environment and the noise and education and all the quality of life stuff simply left. The people who are left are the people who are like, whatever. And at some point, it is, they ran into the same problems back in the nineties. They, they're, they were passing out this book about the history of it and basically there was no public concern at the time when I was in Detroit. There was no great concern about getting lead out of, uh, gasoline, which is unthinkable to me. Now, um, you'll always have to advocate for the community. The community itself is least likely to advocate for itself. Um, somebody has to actually hang in there. Uh, and, um, I, I applaud them and, um, because basically when you get things like ultrafines regulated, when you get to any kind of productive out, you know, outcome on that, the benefits then redound to the city dramatically. It's where the money is and it's where the, uh, public health is. But the thing that I recognized, you know, back then was that it will never resolve itself through a democratic vote. The community itself will never take an interest. People just get, fish don't know they're wet. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Oxiger.
No report, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, um, just a couple of things and, um, saddened to see the end of the farmer's market. I thought it was a very successful year and certainly appreciate everything that they were, uh, that they did. And, uh, I know that there are Christmas market or holiday markets coming up and I hope everybody pays attention to that. There are a number of downtown events coming up, which, uh, should be really great. Uh, and again, look at the calendar for those. We're, we're publishing a pretty good calendar now for everything that's coming up. Uh, additionally, uh, the Lighthouse is hosting a gala. It is sold out at this point and that's fantastic. Um, Boo Bash is also on the eighteenth and then there are a number of candidate forums coming up, so, uh, I don't know if they're listed on the city calendar or not.
But that is a candidate, that is a candidate subject.
Yes, there are people running for the city.
Yep, that, you, you're not, you're not allowed to mention that.
I don't think it's for you here. I'm not advocating for any particular candidate. Just inviting everybody to show up. That's it.
All right, thank you. So, uh, I would like to make a little pitch about Sound Cities Association. I think we might have all gotten an invitation to participate in, uh, in various ways, uh, across the region. Sound Cities Association, uh, their tagline is one million people, one voice, and every elected in King County, I think there are about two hundred and ninety of us or so, um, something depending, uh, is invited to participate. They place about a hundred and twenty elected officials on about thirty-five boards and commissions across the county. This is an opportunity not only to learn and become educated on a variety of subjects that eventually affect our cities, but gives us a bigger voice, uh, at these tables. And the thing about Sound Cities is when you get a seat at one of these tables, you are, you are one, whether you are Bozart's Village or the City of Bellevue, you equal one vote at these tables. So, it's been a fabulous experience and a fa- uh, fabulous way to advocate for this city and to understand what's coming down the pike. And I know our city manager has appreciated the involvement of those of us that have participated, uh, brought a lot to the table here administratively. So, I would really like to encourage all of us at this dius to, to really seriously consider what might be interesting and valuable. Uh, most of these committees can be participated in, um, via Zoom, you know, remotely too, so that's helpful. Um, I'm gonna cut this real short. Uh, one of the most magnificent things I, uh, attended this year, most inspirational thing, was a birthday party for Ezra Nehemiah Taylor, who was the young man who was accidentally shot and killed up at the La Familia up on the highway a handful of years ago. And his, the thing that's so magnificent is his family, instead of, um, imploding into grief and bitterness and anger, has poured all their passion about Ezra back into the community, doing good deeds and supporting the community and especially the underprivileged community up, uh, at, near Pacific Ridge. And so it was such a delight and an honor to attend this, she, they held a thirtieth birthday party for him. He would have turned thirty. And, uh, and at, um, at Selena's request, I did read a little personal kind of letter that sounded a little bit like a proclamation, but just appreciating the fact that there's violence in the community and what they have done to pour their passion back in and that they really appreciated that. Um, they're an inspiration to me. And then, uh, one of the delights of the week was entertaining a bunch of second graders around here, uh, yesterday. Saint Philomena brought their second grade class up and that was really fun. We did a ribbon cutting for them to get into the building. So, uh, all right, in the closing, I, uh, Snohomish County Executive and President of PSRC, Dave Summers, he, uh, he went in it, to DC, uh, in an advocacy team trip representing our region and, uh, he said this the other day. "I appreciate a lot of mutual across-the-aisle interest versus what we see on the media every day. There's much more in common than not." And I was encouraged by that, him being, being there and coming back with that statement. This concludes our meeting for this evening. The next meeting will be October twenty-third, a regular city council business meeting. Please remember that, never mind. Uh, Councilmember Mahoney, do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
We have a second, a second. Councilmember Grayson, we are adjourned. Oh, all in favor, we're adjourned.